I'll call this meeting to order at 5:35 September 6. Any Republican vote? Seeing none, approval of minutes of August 16th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 16th. We hear a second?
Second.
Any errors, omissions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of minutes of the board work session on August 17th.
So move.
We hear a second? Second. Any errors, omissions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Motion to approve the minutes of August 23rd, school board meeting.
So move.
We hear a second?
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The manifest, as large as it is, is right beside Tom. The DOE MS-25 is... Some things around. Tom has it, how many people would like to sign it?
Just Greg.
Just Greg, okay. And we have before us the budget calendar for 2017-18. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? From October to March, in the yellow is our regular board meetings. The board budget work session is noted in blue. The board budget committee meetings are noted in red. We have a date for... In green for the school budget hearing for the snow date in January. And in February, we have the school deliberative session for the snow date of February 7th. I don't know if we needed any more budget meetings, or should we just work on it as new polls?
Was there any clarification on the September meeting?
Yes, next week. Bring that up next. So is everybody okay right now? For now? Budget calendar, okay. So that's a consensus. And then, for next... The preliminary meeting with the BudCon is now scheduled for Thursday, September 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the Heald Room at the Community House.
What date was it?
The 15th of September. And Patty, you can post that, because I think more than two board members are going.
What time was that again?
4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
At 15:00. I'm off media.
Yep. I had heard back from Mr. Kelly that they couldn't meet on the 12th because there's a slot for this meeting.
Can I just ask one question about the budget calendar?
Yep.
When we originally talked about the work sessions, we talked about starting at 4:00. Did we change that for a reason, or is that a...
That's another thing, I don't know, do we want to start earlier?
Well, that's what I'd written in my calendar, and I don't know what other people think, but I think the administration was going to be at that, and so we could...
For the work sessions?
Yeah.
The work sessions, starting at 4:00? 4:00? So 4:00 to 7:00, you want to say?
Those are the two in November.
Yeah, the 14th and the 28th.
I'll change it on the Google Calendar, which will hopefully eventually get you all access to.
And...
We need to be 4:00 to 6:00 instead of 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's November 14th and the 28th.
I didn't check these dates.
That's okay. The other thing, I probably should check with Steve to find out what time he wants to meet. I think last year we met at 5:00, started at 5:00, not 5:30.
The budget committee?
Steve Kelly.
I think they're typical 4:00 to 6:00.
No, this is for the board and the budget committee together. You want me to check with him?
Yeah, I think in the past he's done 4:00.
4:00, yeah. So I'll call him up and...
So December 8th and 15th?
Yep. Just confirm the times, okay. And we do always admit it, we all have just cafeteria. The next thing on the agenda, preschool committee revised guidelines.
If I may, you were going to... Are you going to open the slot for me?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Broder has been working on fuel oil. Got a number of bids, and today he calls everything out for us. Received responses from Stiles, Harris Energy, and CN Brown. The best recommendation at this point is CN Brown at $1.599 per gallon. That's on a pre-buy. And recall that we had $237 in the budget, and so we can use that variance. And not having seen their agreement yet, I'm expecting that we're going to have to fund this purchase fairly quickly. So I would like permission to run a special manifest this week if I need to purchase the oil at the pre-buy price.
How many gallons would that cost?
We're going to buy 90,000 this time.
What do we usually...
I've been buying 86 in a pre-buy, but we've been going over. And since we're starting with empty tanks, two schools...
It's worth it, I think.
But I do appreciate Mr. Broder's doing the legwork on this.
Do you want a motion to accept the price of $1.599?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we accept the price of $1.599 from CN Brown for meeting oil for the 2016-17. At 90,000 gallons.
And then we seconded that? All in favor?
Very high.
Motion carries. So if you get a contract, just let us know, we'll have to... Is that all, Tom?
The other pieces, I gave you a... Well, we're calling a flash report for lack of anything else, because it happened that quickly. Before your next meeting, I hope I'll be able to do some more analysis and get some more detail into the fund balance and where the variances all came from. This is really meat axe. You can see that the fund balance that is going into the revised revenue report is $555,766. And that will reduce the amount raised by taxes. I have a couple of other small revenue adjustments that I'm making for revised estimates, but the net at this point is about $428,000 less than when we had prepared the revenues in the budget.
Do you think we'll kind of fix this kind of... The variances the next time around?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I know we'll be asked, so thank you.
I want to know too.
Yeah. Good point, as do I.
Okay, so now we can go into unfinished business. Preschool committee revised guidelines.
So Greg and I volunteered to work on that, and we have... We requested some information, which we're hoping to get about our current enrollment in the preschool. But we don't have that yet. But I would like to have a discussion because this is a negotiated item in our contracts in non-public about the board's general feeling about this request from Mr. Tucker. So I would suggest we move that into non-public.
Okay, everybody? All right, so we'll part it out into the non-public. Next thing is driver's education program. We don't have a discussion on that.
Yeah, we've worked on this a bit this summer, and again, things don't always line up in the exact order we would like them to, or necessarily have as much time as we'd like to proceed forward. So we didn't have enough information when this first came up here a month or so ago. And we do have an individual who's working on certification, would be interested in working with the school. There seems to be, and again, Joanne has been working with this quite a bit as part of the high school program. And conversations with her and feedback from the community, it seems like there is a fairly strong demand for driver's ed program. It seems like some of the area programs that once were operating are operating at least at a reduced capacity. So, like, as with most endeavors, if you start looking at making changes or adding something, there's many details. Driver's ed is not your run-of-the-bill program, because you're putting young people in cars and learning how to drive, and you know, so we have to go slowly, make sure that everything is in order, including our responsibilities as a school, if in fact, to move forward with the program. So what I want tonight is simply some consensus from the board that it's okay for primarily Joanne and I and Al to work together to put together a very detailed proposal for you. So you'll have the information that you need to make a good, solid decision on whether to move forward with an actual program. That will include financial commitments of the district, as well as how this would look programmatically, and startup times proposed, or at least anticipated enrollment numbers. We just need a lot of information before we bring a formal proposal. But unless there's opposition at the board level for us proceeding, we'd like to proceed with putting together a proposal.
I think you're a great idea.
Please proceed.
Yeah, I hope that the driver's ed classes won't conflict with academic classes. But I agree, there's a need, but I'd hate to... I'd like to see it be after school gets over, because I know there's been a push listing that this is my answer, to get kids enrolled in more academic classes and less free blocks, and so...
That could be in your proposal, right?
Are you okay with that?
So by board consensus, is that okay with you, Steve? What happens?
Greg.
Make the proposal.
We'll put together a very detailed proposal and try to anticipate the questions and the information that you'll need.
I could put you on the spot, do you have a timeframe next meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's... I would say within the next meeting, for sure, within the next couple of meetings. We need to get into something pretty firm sometime at least by later this month or early October.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, because this possibly might not start till, say, next year, or...
Yeah, at best it would start in January. So we have some time, but not a lot. And I think families also need to know if we're going to do this, so they can make other arrangements if we are or not.
So, next on the agenda is Amy Cough, with technology goals in training.
Hello. Hi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Amy Cough, I'm sorry, I went back to you. And this is my fourth year in the district. I was hired as a library media specialist at Lakeway. And in that job came some technology skills in the library, integrating those research skills and other things. And from there, it sort of led into this technology integration with the Chromebooks being purchased for Lakeway. So I just wanted to give you an update on how that's going and what we're doing, and sort of how that process came to be. And, God willing, everything goes as planned. I told Dale if I looked like I'm planning up here.
By God willing, Amy Dale.
Amy, do you have a chair over here? Do you need a chair? I'm gonna... I'm gonna stand. Sure, the best way to do this would be... You want a chair to sit right there?
There's a chair right here.
Sure. I don't want you to hack to kneel. Okay, still searching, hold on, I'll do everything I know how to do, Dale.
Hold on. Hold back computer, okay. You know, for some reasons, got huge heat projectors. They just doesn't... They hate each other.
Okay, so I introduced myself. And the first thing I wanted to share is why should we embrace technology? Why is it important? And I noticed in your goals, one of your goals was to keep current with trends and practices affecting education. So I thought you were already ahead of the curve, because embracing technology is kind of keeping current with what's going on. I have a little video here that I wanted to share that I found on YouTube, that I thought really sort of nailed it home as to what we're shooting for. If you don't mind seeing it, it's not too long. I don't have speakers, so I'm hoping the sound on the computer will be enough to... It's just music for this one. So, that was just a little overview. A lot of that we're already doing, you know, in our CTE programs and other things. But at Lakeway, we had a little bit of work to do in order to get there. So the way this all started was, a technology committee was created at Lakeway last year. And we started to look at exactly what does the state of New Hampshire require of public schools regarding technology education, just to see where we were at. And so, in the bolder white down below the second bullet, it's taken from the document on the State Department of Ed's website, minimum standards for public school approval. So these are the minimum standards. You can read what it says, but essentially what it's saying is that that will require an integrated approach to using 21st century tools. And that will have an ICT curriculum that students are following, so information and communication technology. And so we said, okay, in order to do this, what do we need to do? And we began looking at our own curriculum surrounding technology education and found that we really didn't have a technology curriculum, so to speak, other than the standards that I was teaching from the American Association of School Librarians had some tech standards in there. So we just went and looked at what are other places doing, we looked online and found some other things. We found one from Fresno, California, that we liked. We decided to use that as a guideline and use it kind of as a working document this year to see how it fit our students and our teachers and what we wanted to do with it. So then we thought, okay, so we have some standards to follow, how are we going to teach those standards? And we had lots of carts of laptops available to us, but when the students would come to see me, it was once a week. And if there was testing going on, SmarterBalanced or NWEA, then the computers weren't available. So it ended up being maybe once a month that I was able to use the computers with the students. And we thought that that wasn't going to enable us to teach the skills that they needed to have. So we had a big debate over whether or not to go iPads or Chromebooks. We already had a cart of iPads at the school, but Chromebooks were a big buzz that we were hearing about. They're a lot cheaper. So we did a little research on that and ultimately settled on the Chromebooks. A group of us went to Crystal McCollum Elementary School in Concord, which is an Apple-designated school. They have iPads. So we went there to see what they were doing with iPads, and the tech integrator that we spoke with there, if anything, sort of discouraged us, because she said they didn't get a lot of support from Apple. So we left there feeling like, okay, we know what we want to do. And given the price difference in Chromebooks versus iPads, it was more fiscally responsible, too, we felt, for what we were going to be getting. So this is just a little video as to why Chromebooks for Education is really great.
Introducing Chromebooks for Education. A simple way to bring power of the web into the classroom. Manage school-wide sets of hardware and keep students focused. For instance, Chromebooks need more time for teaching by booting up in just eight seconds. That's less time than it takes to make a paper airplane. Even after entering sleep mode, they were soon working immediately. And unlike most notebook computers, Chromebooks have a battery that lasts up to eight hours. So even at the end of a long school day, they're still going strong. Built-in Wi-Fi and optional 3G allow Chromebooks to connect to the web anytime, anywhere. Chromebooks are also built around a web browser, which means everything is stored online. Students and teachers can simply log on to any machine to access their emails, documents, and personal settings. So there are no excuses for missing or incomplete homework. Without the need for constant software updates and yearly...
There's Dale.
Schools can manage an entire fleet of Chromebooks with just a few clicks. Administrators can configure and manage computers and user accounts via a web-based console. They can also control which web apps and extensions users can add. Chromebooks stay up-to-date with the latest features and fixes, so IT managers can spend less time updating hardware and more time focusing on the important things. Integrated security provides multiple layers of protection that defends computers and the entire network from malware and viruses. The Chromebooks for Education program includes everything from the computers and operating system to updates, web-based management, and extended warranty and support from Google. At the end of the day, Chromebooks for Education enables schools to be more efficient in terms of classroom time, IT resources, and technology budgets, which ultimately leads to happy teachers, students, and parents. To find out more about getting Chromebooks for your school, visit google.com/...
So of course, that was made by Google, so they're going to make them sound great, but those are all the reasons that we decided to go with Chromebooks. So now, here we are now, and the new equipment that is at Lakeway currently, this summer we received 130 new Chromebooks, which were distributed to each classroom, grades 2 through 4. 11 new carts were also purchased to keep the Chromebook safe and charged when not in use. And Crystal alone, single-handedly, put together, what, seven of those in the library? I have a picture. And then, those Chromebooks, the 130 new Chromebooks, were added to the Chromebooks that were purchased last year. So we piloted the Chromebook program with the 6th grade last year, and then the 5th grade also received them. So in total, now all grades 2 through 6 have our one-to-one with a Chromebook, which is pretty exciting. And so now we're working on, I've been going into the classrooms last week and just teaching them how to use them, how to get up and running, and it's a learning curve, for sure, and, you know, but I think it's going to be good. And these are the things we're hoping, at the end of the day, the students will be using the Chromebooks to do. So, you know, sometimes people think technology is, oh, you can make a Google slide presentation, or you can do it. It's not so much that, as when you're making those presentations, or when you're creating something, you're thinking critically, and you're collaborating with your peers, communicating effectively, and becoming a problem solver. So those are the ultimate goals, and we're hoping to integrate the technology for them to do that more efficiently. And they've been busy, learning how to do lots of things with their Chromebooks. So here's just some pictures of last week, actually. That is in Casey Pilgrim's 3rd grade classroom. And on this particular day, they were just searching around on the different apps that are already installed on their Chromebook. So there are several apps for learning that are already on, and you can search for other things, and we can add things as we go. This happened to be a typing one that they were doing, a keyboarding one. So, lots of different things available to them. And that's it. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
Thank you very much. Great to see you.
Battery life is a big deal.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know, it's huge. And the boot-up time is actually less than eight seconds, because the kids counted it.
Yeah. Pretty quick.
Want me to shut this off, Dale, or are you...
Yeah, no, I know. I thought I didn't bring any tech proposition.
Okay, Dale, you're on student Chromebook agreement.
So, over here, okay, or you guys want me to come up front? So, first I'd like to comment, in addition to what Amy just presented, one thing she didn't mention, she's actually taking time out of her day on Tuesdays to do what has been declared a Tech Tuesday event after school. So she stays after school with staff and, have you had any students?
Yeah. Oh, no, mostly students.
Mostly staff, but teaching them the Google operating system that is throughout the school down there. So, you know, and then we're going to be starting the same thing at the high school next Tuesday with Jeremy Brown for staff members as well. So what I asked for time tonight was, I said, a Chromebook agreement that myself... that, uh, myself, as well as the tech committee, um, approved, uh, from our meeting, uh, last week. Um, our goal is to go one-to-one, uh, seven through 12 initially, which means that, um, all students in grade seven through 12 will have the opportunity to take, um, Chromebook, a case, and a charger home with them, um, and use throughout the school year, and then turn it at the end of the school year with the expectation that, uh, when they graduate, um, they, Chromebook goes with them. And, you know, that's our kind of gift to them, and we continue to purchase, uh, new ones with the expectation that a, a Chromebook should last six years. Amy just went over a lot of the, the key points that were sold on as a tech group as to why, um, we want to go Chromebooks. Um, you know, easier to use, easier to integrate into the classroom, um, you know, battery life, you know, is the biggest thing. But the contract that, uh, we came up with, um, we feel that it serves a couple purposes. One, it kind of protects us as a school district, um, that, you know, they understand that they are, um, getting a loaned device from us. Um, that it is a responsibility that we're teaching them, that they have to maintain that. And part of the contract does state that it's their responsibility to bring it to school fully charged. So, they're not using any school resources, you know, for charging purposes, and it would last throughout the school day. Um, so, it's, it's like a textbook for them to take, uh, home with them, to use at home if they don't have. Um, and the contract also states that they have to abide by the same, um, acceptable use guidelines at the school as they would at home. So, they can't download, you know, Facebook or Twitter or anything from their home Wi-Fi, that that would be monitored, um, from our end. So, uh, what we are asking is that, once we're ready to roll this out, that the board, um, would adopt this contract that, uh, we would use, uh, when we do that.
Yeah, how easy is it for, for you to manage and to oversee the, the network as far as who's downloading what? And if someone does download an app that's not acceptable, I mean, how quickly can you get on top of that? Is it an alert to you, or do you have to monitor everything?
At, at the school level, they can't do anything.
Right.
Um, that's, that's prohibited. And they come to school, they won't be able to access that app. The only advantage we have is Google has a, um, program called GoGuardian that would allow myself or a staff member to log into any, um, Chromebook that's on their same Wi-Fi. So, a teacher could be at the front of the classroom on their Chromebook, and they could look at everybody else's screen and all the apps or anything that they have. So, the, the good thing about the Chromebooks is so much of it's cloud-based, so the, the risk of viruses or, or malware or anything is very minimal, if at all. But it would be a software that we would have to purchase to be able to, to monitor that. And for the most part, I think the majority of the kids would be good with it. Um, there's only, you're going to have a few kids that are going to try to abuse the, the privilege, I'm sure.
Now, if it's taken away, if, if they do mishandle the Chromebook, um, that's how they're doing their homework and what have you? How?
I, I thought that question would come up tonight, and we were, we were wondering the same thing, like, you know, what would we proceed with doing, um, from a, you know, technology standpoint, if we want them to have it to increase their learning capabilities, but then, at the same time, discipline them for misuse? And how do you take away their, you know, textbook? Or how do you take away their, you know? So, you know, those are a lot of things that, you know, we hadn't necessarily discussed at the tech committee meeting. We, we wanted to, um, basically lay out a policy that we wanted to follow first, um, to get something rolling so that we're not doing this in February, that we're doing this by, you know, October, November, and the kids can use it for a majority of the school year. Uh, but that's a good question. It depends on how the staff itself uses, um, the Chromebooks in the classroom or doesn't use them in the classroom.
How do the staff anticipate using?
Um, I've put out a, a survey, uh, that went out today to the Littleton, um, staff at the high school, um, asking how they use the technology. Um, a lot of people are still using the laptops, and that's their preference of use. Um, but I think part of that is because they don't know how they can take advantage of using a Chromebook. It's new. It's new technology to most of them, um, myself included. We all grew up with Microsoft and Windows, and, um, you know, we're comfortable with that. So, uh, it would be a learning. But there's, there are teachers that we already have in our school that have a paperless classroom by using the Chromebooks. Um, all of their curriculum is stored on the Google Drive and is only shared with the kids in the class. All the homework assignments are uploaded, so some people are using it to its full extent, but not everyone. And some aren't going to be able to, you know, when you talk from a graphic standpoint or something, there's certain things that a Chromebook is going to be limited to, you know, so it won't be 100%, you know, all classes that could use a Chromebook. But we can buy approximately, it's good to listen. Um, we can buy approximately, uh, four, uh, Chromebooks for every one laptop that we purchase. So, from a cost-saving standpoint. Um, I think with, with Amy, with Jeremy, with myself, Matt, um, we could help integrate this even more into the classroom to where teachers are comfortable with doing it. And I've, uh, volunteered, um, time after school for teachers, once we roll this out to, to have meetings individually, if that's what they're more comfortable with, um, or we can do it in group sessions.
And do we have a sense of how many of our families have, um, internet access at home? Are we assuming everybody does? Or how do, do we have a sense of, of that, if there are people who don't?
Um, I don't have the statistics on that to know. I mean, I would have, I'd like to assume, you know, it's a high percentage, but I, you know.
I think it probably is, but I just wondered if there were.
The only issue that I think we still have in our area is that some places, you know, that are further out still don't have the high-speed capability, so they're, they're still undialled. Um, but, you know, that's, you know, I hopefully feel far between for the students. I mean, our, our goal is to help our student, um, have the opportunity to excel. Um, and we feel that adding this technology is the way for them to do it.
On this permission form that we generated here, um, I, I read it, but maybe I missed it. Um, if they don't have, is there a place where you could put, send this home to everyone? Is that your intent, all the students?
Seven.
And could there be a place where they say that they don't have internet access? So, so you know not to give, to send it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could, we could ask that.
But do you care? I mean, I don't know. I'm, I don't know what I'm asking. I mean, you're going to give it to them anyway, right?
Correct.
And they're not going to take it home. If they, well, they could use it somewhere else, I guess. Yeah.
There's morning and after-school programs at both buildings.
Yeah.
So, they would be welcome in fore-school and after-school. Um, so, there's always that. I know there's places in town, the library.
Yes, I just thought of that as I was talking. They could probably use it elsewhere. Yeah.
I mean, the, the one thing that we want is, you know, to be able to teach them the responsibility of taking it on their own, um, but also to limit our storage, um, requirements at the high school. Um, the one exception that we did put in there would be for student athletes for away games. We would designate a cart in the library for them to leave the Chromebook while they're traveling to the game. And when they get home that night, the coach or coaches would let them in to get their Chromebook, so they're not traveling with it unless they needed it, um, to use for certain.
But they could if they wanted to.
They could if they wanted to. But we, we want to make sure we eliminate, you know, any chances of damage that we can, that would be caused from that. Smart.
And, and they would still just use the same Chromebook for their NWEA and their smarter balance as well? When that happens, how does that work with the testing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was talking with Katie today in the guidance department about that. And, yeah, I mean, everything, um, is functional, you know, would be functional. And also, um, with the ESOL group, I double-checked to make sure that, um, their requirements would, would suffice with the Chromebook as well. And the, the answer is yes.
Wow. And that, what, what are the Chromebooks, 250 each?
Uh, that, well, what I put in there was 250. That includes, um, the Chromebook, the case, and, and the charger is a rough price, you know? The Chromebooks that we purchased for this school year cost us just over $200 each.
Okay.
Um, and that possibly is because of the quantity that we purchased, you know, purchasing. We purchased a total of 230, so I'm sure we got a, a significant discount as a result of that. But give or take 200 to 225 is the average cost we find on a Chromebook. Versus the laptops that we purchased or in the process of purchasing are about $680 for staff, so.
And then, just explain one more time. So, the kids would get them in seventh grade, the students? And in an ideal world, if we had a student who was here that entire time, then they would leave with it at graduation, is what you're proposing?
That's what we would propose.
Possibility, yeah.
It's a possibility. Um, the, the next tech meeting, which was going to be today, we moved it to next Monday to not conflict. But, um, that is one of the things that we would, we would want to discuss is, you know, the seventh graders get the new ones now, and then, you know, next year, seventh graders get new ones. And what do we do with, you know, eight through 12 right now? And what Chromebooks do they have? We are few short on the quantity of Chromebooks that we have in the school. However, there's enough in the technology budget to offset the, the difference, so we are fully one-to-one.
And do all teachers and staff have Chromebooks? Does everybody, like, who works in this school have a, have something who needs one?
They have preference, and that was part of the, the email that I sent out today, was what do you prefer to use? A laptop, a Chromebook, or other? And some people bring their own, um, IMAX, um, because they prefer that, and they use that, uh, instead of what we offer. But they, every staff member has one or the other to use.
Including parents?
They have access to, they're not one-to-one, but they all have access to them?
So, they have access to it, but the students will all have them, but not all the staff people?
We have the ability for all parents to have one-to-one. I'm pretty certain all the parents that have been hired at Daisy Bronson and the high school this year, they have all been, they've all received a laptop from me at this point.
Okay. I think, once we get K-1 situated, we will have that. But K-1 got, um, some hand-me-downs, if you will, of, of what was available. So, I think the goal would be that we would be there at some point.
I think it's pretty exciting. Wow. Okay. Who wants to vote on this, or consensus, or? Are you looking for approval to send at home?
Uh, no, not, not necessarily today, if you want, you know, table it for discussion. Um, we're not prepared to, you know, roll out the one-to-one tomorrow, so we don't need an answer. We just wanted to get the process started.
Okay.
So, you may have some alterations to this after next meeting?
Uh, we could. Uh, the section that was highlighted in there, um, we were going to discuss at our tech committee meeting if we wanted to establish, um, some sort of disciplinary guidelines, whether they lose it for three school days, if, you know, they're caught downloading something illegally, or, you know, that's, the next discussion that we were going to have as a tech committee was the reason why it was highlighted for us, because that's a fairly vague statement in the contract.
I, I think, yeah.
We would, we would, you know, discuss as a tech meet, you know, tech committee what we would want to do, and then ask for your approval with the change.
Yeah, because that's, that's probably been the most important part of the policy is to do it and take it away.
But right now, within the school buildings, they are not able to download anything.
Correct.
But they could do it at home.
Correct, because we don't monitor their Wi-Fi.
But they can certainly go on to other sites if they're not, you know, you could be, have your Chromebook up, and you could go on to, you might not download it, but you can go on to a site and play a game, correct? So.
Not at the school, but at, at home. Most of the gaming sites are blocked through our firewall at the high school.
And actually, they wouldn't be downloading because there's nowhere to.
Right. But, but I mean, but you could go and.
But they could access it, yeah.
Yeah, you could access it. Well, okay.
Which is, yeah.
All right. So. I, I would support the idea of having the one-to-ones to go home. I mean, do the kids, can they, can they choose to use their own computer if they prefer? Or do they have to do, take the Chromebook?
We purchased the Chromebooks with the intent of us to provide. I guess if they wanted to. Other schools do have that, um, as part of their policy, that the student has to bring a device from home, and that's considered acceptable. There's no, um, you know, contract that they have to sign other than the, the acceptable use guidelines, that they won't use their device on school time for anything that's inappropriate.
But aren't we looking at these like a school textbook? So, shouldn't they be using it?
I'm okay with it.
That's the goal.
I was just asking, because I think some, you know, you might have a kid at home that really likes theirs, and they don't want the Chromebook, and so, I just, we got to have a plan of what we're going to say.
Well, the, the plan will really come into place with the staff and what we decide to do, or, you know, they decide to do in their classroom. You know, if they're not going to fully support the Chromebook plan, then it kind of defeats the purpose. But I think, from a technology standpoint and a tech committee, we, we can convince that they'll do what they needed to do for, for it to be successful. And it's so much easier to use, it truly is, and that is trying to sell that as it's, you know, Steve got on the problem tonight. You know, we struggle to get on with the laptops still over here, so.
Okay. You can hold it and table it for next meeting, see what else you have.
Okay. Great. Thank you. You worked, you really worked with it, so thank you.
Yes. Not be short.
From our clinically advanced care, to our compassionate and skilled doctors and staff, to our patient-friendly amenities, our innovative path to healing will make you feel better about getting well.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, committee reports, personnel. There's been no meeting yet. Facilities, do you have any?
Yep, we met, which was great, and we made a meeting schedule. And we're going to be in good shape to get the, uh, budget developed for the facilities end of it. And, um, we had an excellent update on all the summer projects and, and what's coming down the pike, so it was very good. Um, right there.
No, it was just, it was good to get back on board and realize that we have a lot of stuff to move on.
Yeah.
And a lot of stuff to get kind of hammered out before we get to budget season.
Okay. But we're going, we're going to meet twice a month. So, we'll be, be able to bring something forward to the whole board for your consideration.
Okay. So, with policy, um, we'd like to meet once a month. Um, and just put it on the schedule, so if any of the administrators have a policy that they need to bring before the board, that the, uh, policy committee can have a scheduled meeting, and if there's nothing, we can cancel it. So, I guess I need to know what days available sometime from you soon.
Sure. I can get you that information, absolutely.
And do you need to say anything? But right now, the cell phone policy, um, basically, the cell phone is not, cannot be used when the time school starts till the time school ends, if I remember correctly, only at lunchtime. Is that correct, folks?
If, if I'm right.
And during break, whatever that means. So, we'd like more information to come to the policy committee, if there's a change there at all. And I guess that's all I'm going to say. Uh, Lakeway site committee?
Yeah, we had a, a committee meeting last week and tied together the information on the sites that we were reviewing. We have a short list that we have agreed would be the list that we've put forward recommendations. So, next meeting, I'll have a written report of where we are and what the board needs to do from this point as far as recommendations. And then, along with that, I was talking to George and Henry as far as Lakeway is concerned to get a, an updated, um, for some of the major issues at Lakeway. Just beginning to present the pros and cons of a new Lakeway again. to present the pros and cons of a new Lake Way again, and the old Lake Way, so, an updated pros and cons.
Okay.
So I'll have that written for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, if I'm, if you go into the Google folder there, you'll see a document, all the document is just an outline of the points, I've got seven, yes, it's titled Superintendent's Report, I've got seven topics to share with you briefly tonight. School year's off to an excellent start, I think, you know, I spent some time, quite a bit of time in the buildings since the students have come, in the secondary schools today. Crystal, I'm coming your way tomorrow, I'll be back over the elementary, it was over there last week, one rainy morning, I picked a wet morning to be there, it was really nice, there, you know, out there with Crystal and Dana, and Chief Smith greeting the kids as they came in, the kids, this was the second or third day of school, right, they were really, really excited, and classrooms are in excellent condition, I think we've already noted the work of the George and all the people that went into making that possible, but really, again, happy with what I saw there, and as well as the excellent work by the teachers in both buildings, everybody's working together, and I think it's off to a really good start. Tom, while this year is starting, last year's concluding, I want to acknowledge the work of Tom, and certainly his staff, and all the work that goes into closing down the budget year, and as we're moving into the next year, the last year is approaching its conclusion, and I know it's been a huge undertaking, so thank you, I acknowledge you and your staff for that, and for helping us move forward on that. Step Project, I wanted to comment briefly on that, and that's a program, and Al can help me with this, he knows more about than I do, and certainly Louis knows even more, but, and Tom as well, but it's a system whereby our emergency system and our phone systems are tested periodically. We did have a couple of areas that showed immediate concerns with that, which have been addressed already and corrected, and several others that didn't function at the highest level we would like, but still function, and so I'm working with Louis on that, and we'll make sure that, in essence, that our phone system is properly entered and linked with the emergency response system that exists locally. Help, you know, that essence of what that entails, I think, and we have, say, have worked on that. Yeah, Al, I'd be pleased.
This is basically the 911 system, so if anyone calls 911 from a designated room, on the other end, they wanna receive the correct information, so that's what we have to always double-check, to make sure that's correct. They want personnel going to the right building and the right room.
So that's probably gonna have to be done annually, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, we were notified, August 18th, you have the document again in the Google Docs, that there was a, one location in the elementary school that was above the guidelines for lead, and we did, you know, it was barely above, but it was above the guidelines, there was a prescription to bring that into compliance, which has been done, and the follow-up report, which I just got today, indicated that the newest testing indicates that the problem is back below accepted levels. If you look, if you look, there is a document, again, in your folder, Lake Way Water Test 916, or 9616, that document is the latest communication regarding the one area that we did have a, from Tom, that we did, one area we did have a lead level that was slightly above the maximum level.
And what course did we take to mitigate it, what did we do?
There is, there is, initially was discontinu, this was a sink that was very rarely used, first of all, that was probably one of the reasons why there was a little higher level, because it had been sitting there for a while, so flushing, getting, you know, water, water running through the system again, and was one of the things, and the other piece of why it was flushed was it really wasn't used actively for people in terms of washing hands and so on. Crystal, Al, I know both of you worked with George on this a little bit, but essentially, it was that process. And, you know, and I think, and again, as a report today indicates, it's below, it's below acceptable level, so it's fine in terms of the lead level, but it's still a little bit higher than some of the other locations, so we'll need to monitor that closely. Obviously, that's a, something we wanna be very careful with. Okay, other questions about that one? Preliminary enrollment report pre-K to grade 12, and you have actually a paper document for that, there's also something on the Google Docs, but you should have this document as well. This is, this is the, this is actually the Lake Way enrollment, and then the second page is enrollment that we took out of the high school, the middle school, the high school. See, number of students, each grade level, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Ours has already changed a little bit.
Yeah, probably, since this morning.
Yep.
Yeah, it's that time of year.
Up or down?
We might have broke even today.
It broke even.
It's been very busy, and probably Patty can attest from history of being there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of in and out at the last minute, a lot of students that haven't shown up yet, that we hadn't officially realized that they moved, sort of, trying to still sort that out, has been, uh...
Yeah.
Okay.
That was up to date as of Friday, I think, is what I'm saying.
For 91 on it, yeah.
Okay, couple things, if you just look at the K-12, with just those numbers, not including the preschool, but that's still, that's again, information that will, is continuing to be updated, but just K-12, currently about 708 students, which I think is a little bit lower than this time of year ago, if I'm, at least some of the numbers I'd looked at. I think one thing is interesting, I asked Al today, so how many students do we have coming over for CTE, or CTC programs, and 105? That's a lot. That's a lot of kids, and, you know, I think, rightfully so, the question's often asked, how are we working with other districts and the communities, and how are we sharing resources and avoiding duplication of services and programs, and this is a good indication that that's happening, at least in the CTC area. How many, I wonder, how many students, do we know how many students are going to other programs? I should've asked you that before, Al, my apologies.
I think there's, today was the first day, because of the...
Yeah, because of the different...
I think there's 11, 12.
Yeah, so, again, our students as well are taking advantage regionally of programs, so there's not the duplication of programs, and it'll be ongoing, certainly an ongoing process to try, regionally, just try to make those programs where we can complement each other, and make efficient and wise use of resources in the process. Google Doc, Google Calendar slash Google Docs, you know, we're, as, as, we're literally live with the transition tonight, and so, we're making progress with that, but certainly, I think, it's good, it's good for us also to use the Google Docs, it is what our teachers are using, the kids are using, it'll make us more, probably give us a little bit, I know myself, a little bit of humble pie once in a while, when I think I really know what I'm doing, and I can't get a calendar to share properly, for instance, and things like that. The board calendar, which I developed and will continue to work on, is a shared document also, that you all should be able to see, and my point in that was to put everything we do together, all the various committees, board meetings, budget meetings, but we've got facilities meetings, or committees, we have budget, we have this, we have that, negotiations and so on, to try to give a good, good overall perspective of that. I've been in the classrooms a bit, I'm really, really happy, I told teachers a week before last, when I go to the classrooms, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna see what's, you know, the things that are happening with the kids, and the classes, and the good work of the teachers, and certainly haven't been disappointed, I've enjoyed the few visits I've made so far. It's a little different role, the supervision, evaluation role, that comes, that's a building principal, assistant principal, I'm not, I'm not in the classrooms in that capacity all, I'm there because I wanna know what's happening in the curriculum, and how, how our students are doing, how our teachers are doing, get a sense of overall program. That was one of the things that was clear, and again, I refer the survey that was done by the staff, what they look for in the new superintendents, and presence in the schools, presence actually in the classrooms, is one of those, one of those things, and something that's been pretty natural for me throughout my career, so, again, I've enjoyed that very much. I hope I'm there enough so that as time goes on, when I enter a classroom, there's no reaction at all, it's just, oh, he's here again, that whole bit's a good thing, not, no big deal, but I think there's been some of that already, 'cause it's not about me, it's about, just, I just wanna spend a little time. Dr. Marzano, I, you know, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about his work a week before last, a little bit, or our work subsequent to his arrival, as well as after his presentation, I think that, that, you know, we, I was talking, and I was talking today a little bit, and, you know, there's, there's many excellent people out there in the field of education, have done a lot of work, they come, they go, they do, they contribute, they make, you know, make a difference in schools, some of them make a lot of money, some of them don't, whatever, there's a lot of people out there, and you can, you can just, you know, Google whatever, pick a topic, educational topic, and you're gonna find many, many people who've done research, have done this, have done that, are willing to do a workshop, whatever the topic. I don't know, I think, if you look over the period of about 30 years or so, though, I think it'd be hard pressed to find somebody who's had the presence of Dr. Marzano. He's, he's, he's done a lot of work, and it stood the test of time, and I think that's what's really significant here, for us to have just even a brief time with him, to, again, to solidify some of the things we're working on, to, and open up some new questions, to address some of the ongoing topics that he's been working in, as well as our schools and other schools, was time well spent, resources well spent. He, he was, I think, from my perspective, and this is just my thought, he was one of the, of the educational writers, presenters, experts, if you will, that really started using a high level of research, and tried to do, research in terms of what is effective teaching practice. You know, his famous publication, What Works in Schools, and What Works in Schools was based on a meta-analysis of many, 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 many pieces of research, and again, it showed what practices tended to make the biggest difference in student performance, and so that was one of the many things he's done, he's been tremendously active in the field of curriculum development, standard movement and so on. So, we were lucky to have him, he was very gracious, humble, and I think was very, very well-received by our faculty and staff. Anybody, Crystal, Amy, anybody else who was there, Al, observation?
It opened up a lot of conversation, it was nice to have everybody capable of working together, which we typically don't have a lot of time to do, I'll be interested to see where we're able to go with the staff from here, so we're gonna have to add them all on that.
It was interesting for me to see, given, you know, in the presentation that I was showing you, where I was talking about, the possibility that in the future, some of the things that we have been in education for years, grades, the way we know them, could be obsolete, and that was a lot of what he was talking about, the way we're grading students, and how we assess what they know, so it was really interesting to me, it kind of tied into what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think, on this Superintendent Report, you'll see that that Marzano follow-up is blue, that's a hot link, if you click on that, you're gonna see this document I have right here in my hand. This is, this is a compilation of teacher responses, Jennifer, Carbono, and Crystal facilitated, planned, facilitated, did the work with the teachers, before Dr. Marzano's presentation, after the presentation, good practice, good learning practice by doing that. They, before, before, before we did, before Dr. Marzano came, we did a little, little activity, talking about the reading we've been doing, and again, the reading by, by, book by Guskey, Thomas Guskey, that focused on, on assessment practices, grading practices, so that, that book, again, was the read, the preparation for Dr. Marzano, and we spent a little bit of time the day before Dr. Marzano talking about what we found there, and one of the, we asked some questions, why do we assign grades? To show progress, to guide students, to provide incentives, these were some of the responses, why do we, why do we have report cards expressing learning expectations, how well the work was done, you know, this is what we're doing now, what students were expected to learn, be able to do, how well they did, and whether it is in line at this time, to get data to help guide instruction, valedictorians, ranking, communicate to parents, report to colleagues, report to students, those are some of the things we said, we said there before, Marzano, again, based on the reading, what evidence from your reading to support, or use evidence from your reading to support your responses, you have 20 minutes. Report cards should clearly communicate with students who are expected to learn, how well did they learn those things, what students have mastered growth, what areas do they need support, help direct, provide feedback on performance of specific skills, and so on. To influence instruction, we talk a lot about data to inform instruction, that's one of, that's one of the key roles that the instructional coaches play, working with teachers on, teachers on using data to make a difference in the classroom, to influence their instruction. Instruction assessment reporting, these should be all looked at, not in isolation as have done in the past. Clearly communicate with students who are expected to learn, be able to do, at that time in the school year, really critical, as we start to move forward with a little different assessment and grading paradigm. Here's where we want students to be, at this, at the end of the semester, where should they be in August, where should they be in October, where should they be in November, are they meeting the progress that this should be important? So those are, those are some of the, some of the, some of the feedback, and I don't, I don't wanna go over all of it, I do want to acknowledge the work of the teachers, and the work of the facilitators to follow up, oftentimes, we have, you know, a great presentation, we go off to workshop, and that's that, now, now the task, I think it was clear from the teachers that day, where do we go from here? What's the plan? Where is this gonna go? What are we gonna do with this? And I, my comments to them that day were a couple things, one is, take something from the day you heard from Dr. Marzano, or from the reading, and put it to practice now, don't wait for a master plan, don't wait, don't wait for directive from on high, i.e. administration, that's kinda where it comes from, and, don't wait for that, you know, that's, the plan will come, but the plan needs to be developed in conjunction with the stakeholder, okay? Any plan for it to succeed and to be ultimately to work, has to have the work, support, input, and expertise, frankly, particularly from teachers. So, going forward, yes, we will work on fleshing out a plan, move forward with competency-based education, and again, drawing... And again, drawing on a lot of work that's already been done, and believe, you know, a lot of work has already been done in this area. We just have to continue to refine it, expand it, and get it where it needs to be. Then just one party, just one final comment on this, I think is really important. Sometimes this whole topic of competency-based education, standard-based education, it comes back to people saying, we're not doing grades anymore. We're not giving our charries A, B, C, D, whatever. That's part of the model sometimes. I'm less interested in doing away with grades. I'm more interested in giving grades meaning. That's really the issue here. You can do whatever you want. You can do away with grades and say exceed expectations. That sounds a lot like an A to me, okay? Meets expectations sounds a lot like a B. Meets minimum requirements sounds a lot like a C. Okay, fine, we've done away with grades. We've replaced them with two or three words instead of a letter. At the end of the day, it's not about that. At the end of the day, what does a grade tell us? Specifically, what a student knows, is able to do, and what they don't know, what they're not able to. That's what we're after. This, that's a task of momentous effort, but it's worth the effort because it'll give us better information, it'll better prepare our kids for the world that we know is moving further and further at greater, greater speed in terms of technology and information. Thank you. I know that a little lot, but it is what we do. I mean, teaching and learning is what we do. As you know, I could talk forever. I won't, I won't.
Do you see the, I know, I think LakeWay has kind of adopted some of these assessments already with their standard-based report card. Do you see, how do you see that moving forward in the rest of the district? What's the goal, I guess?
I think, I think that's the, that's the big question. I think that the teachers clearly with the feedback here, what's the plan? Where are we going forward? What does that mean for me? What, how much, do we have the capacity at this point with everybody to move forward? So I think that we continue to build on, in working with people who've already implemented this at some level, at a classroom level. They're already using more of a, an approach to, this is what students should know, and this is, and I'm going to use measures of these indicators to determine my grades. Some of that's already happening at the secondary level. But I think that that'll be the key, will be to refine and to continue to build on the work at the elementary school and move it into middle school, into the high school. And, you know, in a timely fashion, I mean, it's here. This is not new stuff. This has been around for a while. This is not a new movement. This is not a new theory. And again, if it's done correctly, it doesn't need to be something that is, that takes away things that certain people also need to have in terms of grades and information on student. Again, I think we have to, we have to realize that there's still, there's still a consumer, colleges and other consumers that do expect a letter grade, and parents, there's nothing wrong with that. We can do better. But you, I think your question is, that is the question. How do we get there? When do we get there? What will it take to get there? That is the question.
Well, just even broader conversations about, you know, when you talk about what's, I think LakeWay has had this. They have effort. If you could put a lot of effort into something and still not master the skill. And so, but if that effort gets you an A, say, at another level, you know, we're using grades, but you really haven't, you can't do the competencies, that's a little misleading. And so, I think, it's effort...
We have pulled out the behavior.
That's what I thought. Okay. Yeah, so they had that conversation and sort of hashed that out.
That was a huge, that was a huge part of Marzano, you know, in talking about that, separating. Doesn't mean that those aren't important.
Right.
Oh, and by the way, and by the way, in certain parts of our curriculum, there's certain effective, it'll affect the domain, and that is, that is, that is the non-cognition, but that is the attitude, the effort does figure into the course itself, some of our technical courses, for instance, and so on, that is part of it. But it's, yeah, it should, again, the end of the day, the grades should reflect attainment of predetermined learning outcomes.
So I need a motion to go into non-public session.
Make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph 2, section 3 of the RSA 91A:3 of the right-to-know law. For numbers 2, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Numbers 3, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board.
I need number 4.
Number 4, consideration of the acquisition sale or lease of real estate or personal property, taking with us the superintendent, and anyone else?
Yeah, we need Al.
We always need Al.
Always need Al, of course, and Tom, the usual suspect.
Second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, vote.
Cook?
Robbins, we get Nelson.
Anna?
We're in. Thank you, folks.